Everyone. This is the June 7th zoning board of adjustment meeting. It is 1:30. We do have a call the meeting to order and we do have a quorum. And we'll go to item number two, review and take any action related to the minute record of the regular meeting held on Monday, May 3rd, 2021. Has everyone looked over the minutes and do we have any questions on it?
Nope.
No questions or no, you haven't looked over it?
No questions.
No questions. Need a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
We need a second?
Second that motion.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The minutes of May 3rd, 2021 are approved. Item number three. ZBA 21-09, 713 East 36th Street, Ameritech Home Homes, single member district number two, Tom Thompson. Request for approval of a variance from section 501a of zoning ordinance to allow for an 18 and a half foot front yard setback in lieu of a 25 foot setback for a home along Crockett Street within the single family residential RS1 zoning district located at 713 East 36th Street. Sherry, you're the presenting.
Yes, good afternoon, everyone. Nice to see you all in person and your smiling faces, right? As you indicated, this is ZBA 2109. It's at 713 East 36th Street, which is in one of the older sections of the city. It's on 0.178 acres and again, it's a variance to allow because it is a corner piece of property. It has two front yards and they've requested a variance on the one on Crockett Street to be 18.5 feet instead of the required 25 feet. This is in District Two, Tom Thompson's district, and it is the Lakeview neighborhood. We sent out 20 notices. I did not receive any in support or opposition. I did get a number of phone calls mainly wanting to know what they were going to do and when I explained it, they said, oh, they didn't have a problem. When I went out to take pictures, the neighbor across the street came over and told me that he was the welcoming committee and would be happy to introduce himself to whoever was coming up to build the home and later to buy the home. And he was very supportive of what they wanted to do. This is the site plan that was submitted. As you can see on the Crockett side, it will be at the actual wall of the house will be at 18 and a half feet back. The front yard setback will be met on the 36th Street. In looking at the three allowed variances, you're very familiar with those special circumstances, public interest and literal enforcement. In this case, the special circumstances seem to fit this request pretty completely. And planning staff does concur that there is a special circumstance for this variance. This area was plotted in 1946 before there was zoning in the area. And if you look at the corners all around, I went in three blocks in every direction and the homes, almost all of them are closer to the second street than what the ordinance would allow now. And this is an infill project. It's a very stable neighborhood and as I indicated, they were interested in seeing a home being built there. When we did the analysis on looking at this, the intended home is a small home. It's 1,028 square feet, which is a two-bedroom small home. The circumstances is not the result of the applicant. As I indicated, it was plotted a long time ago. And the unnecessary hardship in this case would be denying the request because they would only be allowed a 30-foot wide house and that would be pushing it to get it on that lot and to meet all of the needs of anybody nowadays who wants to have a home. That comes out to about 890, 920 square feet. Staff believes in this case, this is the minimum action needed and we went with the 18 and a half because that's where they said the wall of the home was going to be and we felt that was reasonable. I know we usually don't do a half a foot, but our inspectors said he would like to go out and measure that one. So I said, okay, we put it down 18 and a half, 18 feet. No adverse impacts in this case. The ride of way is ample on the Crockett side and so there will be no visual impairment of anybody who's driving by or coming up to the corner on that street. And we believe that it is consistent with the zoning ordinance in that there is separation between the homes. There's enough separation to meet all of the requirements. They are meeting the side lot line, the rear lot line and the front lot, the other front setback. And it is, as I indicated, not going to be a visual impairment to anybody who comes to the stop sign at the corner. And with that, staff is recommending that the zoning board of adjustment grant the variance from section 501a and grant the front yard setback as requested. Are there any questions from the board?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Sherry. All right. Any public comment? Are the applicants here?
Yeah, I've been there. He's just shut off.
Not used to actually showing up in person. My name's Daniel Zarotti. I'm the director of pre-construction, pre-starts with Ameritech Homes. This is Christopher Trevino, the construction manager out here. Hit all the highlights perfectly. We're going to hit every setback except for that one side street setback. We're just asking to push it back a little bit. Our house will actually butt right up to the setback for the non-street side. And then our driveway is going to be on that side too. So we're giving as much clearance from that side street to whoever occupies that home. So there's not going to be a safety visibility triangle issue, anything like that. And other than that, we're going to meet all the other city requirements to build single-family home. So if there's any questions, we can definitely address those as well.
That's the Crockett side that you're speaking of, of the driveway?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, we're going to be as far away from that as we can.
Any questions in the board?
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Any comments from the board? If not, let's ask, I need to ask for a motion. I'll move to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second, ready for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six, zero. Thank you, fellas. That was painless, right? All right, moving on. Wish they were all that easy.
We tried.
Moving on. Item number four, ZBA 21-11, 1301 Prizer Street, Dusick, single member district three, Harry Thomas. A request for approval of a variance from section 501a of the zoning ordinance to allow for a 15-foot front yard setback in lieu of a 25-foot setback for a double frontage home along North Irene Street within the single-family residential RS1 zoning district located at 1301 Prizer Street. You again, Sherry?
Yes, ma'am.
You're working overtime.
Yeah, I'm the setback queen.
You're the setback queen.
As you know, this is an area, again, it's an older area of town. It was plotted, portions of it was plotted in the 30s, 40s, and then this particular area was plotted in the 50s, 51 to be exact. It is on the corner. One of the interesting things about this one in particular, Irene does have a significantly wide right of way in that area of town. It's 25 feet on this side, just for your information. This is in District Three, Harry Thomas's district in the Sephora Concho neighborhood. We again sent out 20 notices. You can tell that they were all plotted at about the same size because we came out with the same number of people in both cases. Again, we had zero in opposition that we received and I did just received one in support that came in today. This is a site plan of the house. You can see that the house is 40 by 38. It is a proposed three-bedroom home. It's going to be built by Galilee is my understanding. And it's the Lily Plan and they have three bedrooms is what the applicant needs in this particular case. It does have the 25-foot showing on there with the house and then the 15-foot on the other side. We had the same allowed variances. We looked at all three of those and again, came and agreed with the special circumstances. We believe that all of the factors that pertained in the other application really do pertain in this case. It was plotted in 1951 before there were zonings. Almost all of the homes in this area also on the corners are built closer to that second street. This is an infill area and just to remind you, Irene Street has that 25-foot right of way before you get to the property line. So it's a significant setback. In examining this through our analysis, we believe the intended home is a three-bedroom home, which is similar to, in size, to almost all of the other houses in the area. Most of them are three-bedroom. They were, it's right at that area where they start getting some larger homes in. So it's three-bedroom and a couple of four-bedrooms in the area. In this case, it's not the result of the applicant. Although the large lot again was planning quite a while back, this area for this north 105 feet was just recently plotted for the house itself. So it is, the lot was actually split so there could be a house on this portion and a house on the south portion also. We believe that denying the request in this case would almost makes the lot unbuildable for most people who want to build in that particular area. And we believe that this is the minimum action needed. As I indicated, Galilee will be the home builder and a three-bedroom home in this is a pretty standard model that they gave us a copy of the diagram for the house. There. We believe that there will be no adverse impacts. The ride of way is ample as we indicated and it will not interfere with a side triangle in any way. And we do believe that this is consistent with the zoning ordinance and the intent in the zoning ordinance. Well, not quite sure how that happened, but I can fix it. Staff is recommending that the zoning board of adjustment grant the variance for this particular application. Are there any questions?
Questions for Sherry?
Did I hear you say that this particular lot, a second house could be built on the back end of that? Is that what you're?
On the bottom end, yes.
And that one would face Irene rather than?
Yes, it would.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
It was kind of neat cruising through that neighborhood. Do we know why Irene has such a wide? Is it the whole length of Irene that's?
It is actually. We brought variances on Irene quite often. I've learned to not ask that when it comes to San Antonio cities or streets. There's a very unique layout on the city streets in this town.
I wonder if any of those other streets out there have that kind of setback.
I'm sure you'll find something different.
Any more questions for Sherry? Thank you, Sherry. Anyone from the public want to comment? Any board comments? There being none, I'll ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Your second?
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Let's have the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Six, zero, all in favor. Thank you. Mr. Fisher.
All right.
Hello.
All right, ZBA members, Jeff Fisher, principal planner. This is our third and last case today, ZBA 2113. The address is 2514 West Avenue J, 0.469 acres. It's west of Johnson Street and north of West Avenue J, along Avenue J. It's in District Five, Lane Carter, in the Santa Rita neighborhood.
Jeff, I don't need to read it into the minutes?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do I need to?
I believe so, yes. I jumped ahead of you there.
You were doing so well.
No.
I'll do it at the end.
I'll stop.
I'll do it at the end. Okay, item number five. ZBA 21-13, 2514 West Avenue J, Raymond, single member district five, Lane Carter. A request for approval of variance from section 501a of the zoning ordinance to allow for a rear yard setback of 13 feet in lieu of the required minimum 20 feet and a west side yard setback of zero feet in lieu of the required five feet for carport patio structure within the single-family residential RS1 zoning district located at 2514 West Avenue J. Go ahead, Mr. Fisher.
Okay, thank you. And just to follow up on what Chair Cortezzi was saying, so let me just give a quick background on this and why I came here today. So we had done some research and received a phone call that there was a structure that was built on this property. Planning and permits had talked about it. We found out that there wasn't a permit. So permits sent a notice to the owner of the property and then they have subsequently contacted us. And so I'd gone out to the site and met with the contractor who's here today as well as the applicant. We verified the setbacks and so we found out that the side yard setback, which needs to be five feet, was actually zero when you count from the overhang. And then the rear was 13 and a half feet. We don't usually do decimals, so we would just round up to 13 feet as the setback, but it's actually 13 and a half to the rear. So it's variance today is for two setbacks, a 13-foot rear yard and a zero-foot side yard. The rear is normally 20 and the side is normally five. So sent it out. You got all of the letters in your staff report. There's two letters we received in support from owner 11, which is kind of kitty corner behind the property and 14 at the corner of Live Oak and Johnson. We received one opposition letter from the neighbor immediately adjacent who's got the overhang up to his property line at number 15 there. So two in support and one opposed. These are some of the photographs that we took as well as a couple that the contractor had provided us. So we kind of combined them together just so you can see the front of the property. So these are really wide lots. This property is almost three full lots. It's two and a half, just over two and a half, so it's 136 feet wide. This is the rear view of the structure. So there's a carport, which is what you see here on the right. And then this is going to be a basically a covered patio as part of the rest of the structure. So it's kind of a half and half carport and patio. It serves as both. These are some of the rear views. So this, what makes this area very unique is a lot of these neighborhoods in Santa Rita, they have rear driveways that were paved. They look like alleys, but they're not actually real alleys and they cut through the property. So the property lines actually touch. So the applicant's rear yard meets with the owner to the north's rear yard. Normally what happens in a subdivision is there's a 20-foot gap in between. In this case, there isn't one, so the alley is even closer to the rear yard. And so that makes it obviously more difficult when we're dealing with this. So you can see that driveway behind the structure is actually seven and a half feet of that is on the applicant's property and seven and a half feet is on the other owner's property, but it is all still private property. So this is looking north from the rear yards. You can see with the, when you count the overhang, it goes up to the property and then this is the alley view.
So this, I mean, that isn't, is not a dedicated alley?
That's correct. That's correct. So my understanding is the neighbors have used it for probably 50 years or more, but it's not actually officially dedicated. Okay, so that's, this is a good bird's eye view of it on their site plan. So it's a zero-foot side yard and then a 13 and a half-foot rear yard. And then that seven and a half feet here is actually just, it is a utility easement, but it's not an alley. So when we look at this, we either have to find, to approve a variance, it's either got to be a special circumstance, an overriding public interest or literal enforcement. So the closest one, I guess, would be special circumstance because the other two wouldn't apply. After we researched this, we don't believe that there is a special circumstance for either variance in this particular case. The rear driveway, unfortunately, if it was a real alley, they would have had an extra seven and a half feet, but they don't. So that rear driveway encroaches into their property. And so that provides that less of separation than it would normally be required. The side variance under, we don't believe there'd be any justification for that. There's potential drainage issues and fire hazards when you have structures up that close. Now, we did research within 500 feet. So I, it's a huge area, so we went as far as we could out with the time that we had just to see whether there are any other variances. And we also looked for other non-conformities on the same block. We did find a couple. The house to the northeast and then to the east do have some setback issues as well as the owner who's objecting to the left has got an overhang as well. However, those look like they could be legal non-conforming or they're already there prior to zoning since the 50s. It's really hard to tell when you go back under the aerials. None of those properties did have variances, so it's just an FYI. And then in terms of the other variances in that area, we found one that had a, for a 25-foot setback, it was denied for a 25-foot rear yard. And then another one for an eight-foot rear yard setback for a workshop. I guess it was more of an accessory structure back in 1983. That one was approved. I looked on the aerials as best I could. I didn't see a workshop ever built, so I don't, again, I don't, those variances based on the older parts of the zoning ordinance, those criteria probably wouldn't be applicable today anyway. So we're really looking at this case as its own circumstance. Okay, so I'll just go over the analysis quick. So again, that seven and a half feet is actually part of the rear yard and not a separate alley, so that provides less separation. I think if the applicant would have come in first and talked to us, they have about 8.8 feet to the, and I'll go back if you need to see it in a minute, but to the east of where they put their carport. There's a little nook basically where the house kind of juts back. If they were to fit it in there, they would be able to meet the setback and they wouldn't have the side yard overhang issue or the rear yard issue, but by putting it in that location, they're short.
The broad, the patio, the?
The whole structure.
The whole structure.
They were, just to move it back. Now, that would mean he would put it, he has an existing patio outside, so he would basically have to cover it over that patio. It's obviously going to have, you know, expenses associated with that, but just in terms of distances and things, he would have met the ordinance. Based on where it is, we believe that there's adverse impacts. You've got issues with drainage and runoff, so if the, all the rainwater comes off, it's going to probably trickle over onto the neighbor's property. And again, that neighbor also has an overhang too, but we believe that might be legal non-conforming was already, was already there. And then finally, in terms of the zoning ordinance, purpose statements talk about same things, just providing adequate space, protecting the development pattern in the area. So we understand, we know that, I think the applicant probably knows now, if he had another chance at this, he probably would have come in and talked to us. Unfortunately, if we, staff can't really recommend approval of this because it would set a negative precedent, so we're kind of left with you all to make this decision today and we're available for any questions that you have.
How much on that adjoining neighbor, I understand you to say that?
I'll go back here.
He too has a overhang.
Yeah, let me go back to the first aerial if we can see it. It's going to be very hard to tell, but actually, you know what? I can probably get it on the picture. Hang on. Okay, so this is the, this is a structure in question and then this is the overhang here. And it looked like, and I know that that owner is here today, but I, this might have been done way before the current owners ever bought these properties. I don't know, but it looks like this property had acquired additional land to avoid that encroachment. So even though it doesn't meet the setback, it looks like somebody had tried to fix that.
Fence line is right where that second railing is running along, where it ties back into that house.
Yep.
Is that right?
Can I ask you to talk into the light so we can get you?
Oh, okay. What is the requirement on overhang to the property line?
That's a good question. So if it's a principal structure, so on this side, this property owner would actually, the overhang could, the house has to be five feet back, but the overhang could go two feet in, so it'd be a three-foot setback. With accessory structures, whether they're attached or detached, so like a carport or a patio like this, it's got to be five feet, five feet from everything.
So your records show there was some additional land bought from the lot next door to protect this?
Correct. The original lots in Santa Rita were 50 feet, but a lot of these homes were really, you know, nice bungalow style. So a lot of the houses actually, like these two, actually sit on two lots or two and a half lots.
So does that, if I'm understanding right, that adjoining neighbor, his roof line, it runs directly, like it runs directly on top of the fence line? So it's sitting right on top of his pocket line? Is that right?
Yes. It's hard without a survey, but we're going to assume the fence line is at zero. So basically by putting this carport structure in, he's going to zero feet. This is also zero feet, but this is pre-existing. This might have been grandfathered. We just weren't able to confirm either way. And I don't want to draw too much attention to the other owner's property and just focus on, I guess, this one today.
Right, right.
Yeah.
All right, okay. Did that particular neighbor submit those comments? Or one of those comments from that particular neighbor?
Yeah, so Mr. Stripling's here today. He was opposed and then there were two in support also within that block.
And there, and there was two other structures in that radius, 500-foot radius that also
Yes, that had?
Had encroachment, not encroachment, but had, that had, that was less than the required setback.
Yes. And my apology, I thought I had those pictures in here. Maybe I did. We got new council slides, but basically there's a carport attached to this house here in the rear that comes up. I'd say it's about 10 feet from the lot line.
Right.
And so that needs to be 20. So this property had a non-conformity. Again, may have been pre-existing, the owner here with the overhang. And then I think it was this one here had a carport also or it, it looked more like a porch in the back that I would say is probably very close to the lot line. Again, I believe those might have been all pre-existing or grandfathered.
When you say might have been existing, is that before the 51 zoning?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And even if they were, let's say they even got variances back then, that would not be a rationale for us to support this variance request. that would not be a rationale for us to support this variance request. The current zoning ordinance, um, due to the reasons we've discussed, want those, those setbacks. So even if they were under a previous ordinance or a previous interpretation, um, staff would be, be mindful of, of not to support that today.
How does, um, um, see if I can say, uh, put my question in, uh, where you can understand it. Down that alley, there's more than one, um, back driveway, from what I call the alley, because I was at least able to drive down it.
Yep.
Whether they were before 51, after 51, uh, I don't know. But it's not abnormal for that one block between what is Live Oak and Avenue J to have something in the back. Uh, there's several of them.
Correct.
And then I also noticed that, um, and I don't know that they were back to 51, again, I also noticed that there were other buildings such as maybe, uh, not going in the yard to know what it was, but, um, storage buildings or what that were very, very nicely built, right on top of the, the, the fence between two properties.
Okay, I'm gonna, Ms. Paul, I'm gonna address that for you as well. So if there's a 10-foot separation from the house, then the accessory structure could actually go to within two feet of the rear property line and the side property line. So if, if, that would be another option, if there was a 10-foot separation, they could do that. They just wanna make sure that there's, um, and, and there's a reason, I guess, for that is, is sightlines, visibility and just, you know, having rear yard space. So if you're a neighbor and you're sitting on your patio, you don't look out and then see another neighbor with their, with their structure. Um, this is unique in the sense that the rear fence of the Live Oak properties, they, all of those fences are back seven and a half feet.
Mm-hmm.
So unfortunately, if there was a real alley here, he'd be fine, because you would measure to the fence line. On, on the other hand, it's not a justification for, uh, for the variance as, as staff looked at it in terms of the zoning criteria, but nevertheless, he is 20 feet from that, that owner's fence to the, to the north.
I see.
To be fair.
If I'm thinking there's so uniform that before the ordinances went in in the 50s, that it was probably in the subdivision restrictions, that this would be the way it happened, or maybe the deed restrictions, cause it's too uniform. I mean, to get everybody lined up and create what, what looks like an alley. Would that have any play? I know the restrictions and the deed restrictions are probably expired, but, uh, you know, they're usually good for 30 years. But that, you know, that would be my whack, that'd be my wild guess, that, cause it's too uniform. Some, something, something that in the old deed restrictions or subdivision restrictions stated that for all these lots here, we'll leave X footage for ingress, ingress purposes to get to the backyard. I don't know, but it's just too uniform. You can't get, you can't get neighbors to agree on it.
I'm gonna let our attorney, uh, speak just for a minute.
Mr. Chairman, uh, if, if there are deed restrictions, um, that's not something that the city could enforce, but certainly the property owners that are subject to those deed restrictions, they could enforce it among themselves, but...
They have a, they have a ending on them usually, but, well, maybe not on the deed. Subdivision restrictions have a, have an ending, usually 30 years.
Yeah, yeah, certainly.
But if it's in a deed, if it's in a deed, it might not, it might continue on, okay?
Right.
It's just too uniform.
So would, would, would the deed restrictions say, for instance, call it an alley?
Maybe, I, I'm not sure.
Or right away, or...
Brendan, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, the city, as, as us, at least with planning staff, we're not usually privy to those. And I think for purposes of zoning, we don't, uh, enforce those deed restrictions, even if there were applicable. That would be a separate agreement between the, the owners. And so we would only look at the zoning ordinance, does it meet the, the zoning setbacks or not?
The, the, what you're going by doesn't address something like that, that if there is deed restrictions, we look, we will look at it or not look at it, or that the deed restrictions will override or grandfathered in, or...
It could create issues for them privately, but it would, the city wouldn't enforce those.
City would, okay.
Yes, sir.
But we did get a, um, letter in favor of this from the property owner directly behind, um, that has come in. And in fact, his words are, um, there, the back variance, there is at least 20 feet between my fence and their fence with alley separating. So even the owners, uh, refer to that space between as an alley.
Sure, sure, and, and, and we saw the other side of it as well. So really in the end, it's up to y'all to determine, do you believe that, that fence line being pushed back is a special circumstance? Or, or based on, on our research, is it, is a special circumstance the, the alley or the driveway or not? Or is it the opposite, is it not? Because in, in essence, it's even closer when the, when you count the seven and a half on the property. So it's really up to y'all to, to make that determination and I think whichever way you go, it's, it's entirely your decision.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
No, well, hold on, I was just, that was...
Okay.
No pressure.
No pressure.
No.
So, and it said, uh, is, so all the concrete, all the flatwork on this subject property, that, that was all, that, that's been there for like a long time, is that, is that right?
Correct, we, we looked at that too, um, but yes, correct.
All that, all that existing concrete flatwork were all existing and, and, you know, okay, alright, okay.
Sure.
Because, because we have, um, uh, this is gonna be really difficult, but because we have, is there other things that, uh, give us opportunity to, um, look at this with, um, the opportunity to do something besides just deny or just, uh, approve?
Yes, I mean, you, you can put, uh, you can approve with conditions.
Okay.
You can approve one of the variances, so maybe you wanna do the rear yard and not the side. I'm not saying speaking for...
No, I, I understand.
Or, or what, or the opposite, you could approve the side and not the rear. Um, I don't know, Brendan, if there's any, you know, conditions of time or, or substance, other, other things. I know, I know with special circumstances, the proliferation of other non-conformities does not necessarily constitute a reason for the variance, but I, I think certainly you could put any conditions that are what you would deem reasonable or, um, that would meet that intent. And again, just to read that, what a special circumstance is, something that's peculiar to the land or structure, not applicable to other land or structures in the same zoning district and are not merely financial, which is unfortunate. I think, cause obviously if he has had to move it, it's, they don't, we can't consider that. But you could, again, how you determine what's peculiar to the land or structure, um, that's, that's very unique to this property versus say in another neighborhood somewhere else.
Good afternoon, I just wanted to mention one thing and I know Jeff had it in his notes and he had a lot of notes, but Aaron Benoy, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. Just wanna remind you that on the side setback, if you were to approve that, that would then turn into a firewall that would have to be constructed there. So, uh, again, you cannot waive anything out of the building code, so we can't go down that path. But just to keep you aware, and I know Jeff had researched that and, and Charlie back there tapped me on my shoulder and said, hey, will you go mention that? So just want you to keep that in your mind, that the side yard setback, if approved, within five feet, would have to have a fire rating in, is that all the way, five feet? Is that right, Charlie?
That's right.
Okay, yes, that is correct, just making sure, just, giving you just an FYI, thank you.
You're a big help. Geez, it made our work more complicated.
Thank you.
That means from that air conditioning unit back where those posts are, would have to be a firewall setting.
Yeah. Oh, oh, hit a problem.
It would have to go beyond, it would have to go beyond the structure, firewall? You're saying it'd have to go the entire length of the fence?
Yes, um, did... Did y'all have any more, uh, questions? I was gonna say, the, the applicants here and some of the surrounding property owners.
Thank you, Jeff.
No problem.
I have a question, maybe the property owner next door that had a complaint, if a firewall would make that...
Okay, well, we'll fall for public comment.
Okay.
Anybody from the public wanna come up and state your name and who you are and tell us the story?
Alright, my name is, uh, Cruz Moreno, I'm with Moreno Construction. I came in to help, uh, fix what's going on here. Right here on your picture on the right-hand side, uh, we do understand that if there is a firewall needed or if accepted, we would put a firewall. Um, they said it's a five-foot setback. If we went five foot, it, we'd have to cut off the tree and we do understand that they said that you only need eight foot for a vehicle to fit in. Um, there's no, unless a, a custom door went in for our garage doors are eight foot, so I need another foot on each side to fit a, a vehicle in there. Um, so I wouldn't be able to use that, that area. Um, the concrete slab also, like you said, and like you asked earlier, um, that was already there with the original plans that they had for the house plans. I guess something was gonna be built there before and all the concrete was already there. There's gas lines in between, so we, I didn't wanna cut nothing in there. Um, where the structure comes, he also said it could move over to the right five foot and it could avoid it everything. Um, the same, it's uniformed, so the same way that, that pitch comes out, the house comes out like that and then it has a different pitch on the other side. I wouldn't have been able to move it without a, a lot more, um, making it, making it look un-uniform, making it look, uh...
So you're tying it into the existing house?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It is tied into existing house. Um, and like, like y'all did ask, um, about the alley, everybody, everybody uses it for an alley. I, I thought it was an alley. We were working, we, we, the city went back there, that's when, that's when they went into the alley. The neighbors, uh, like the ones he, he showed on the two sides, their, their driveway is right through the alley or whatever they call it. Um, but when I went to the city and I said, hey, um, it's an alley, they, they told me, well, according to this line here, uh, it's not an alley. I said, I have no idea, it's not paved alley, but it's an alley, cause everybody drives through it. Um, so I wouldn't, the homeowner also said that if, if we needed to scoot it back and we're allowed two feet, you said, overhang?
Let me turn this back on. Uh, you wouldn't have, you wouldn't be allowed any, um, you'd have to have five feet back.
Okay, is that from the main structure, from my wall?
Even from the overhang.
Okay, so my overall, my overhang, I wouldn't have no overhang, it's just straight?
Cor- correct.
Okay, well, uh...
What's that on now?
Right there on my carport, right?
He's talking about this.
Okay, okay, gotcha, gotcha.
If I had to scoot back five feet and we had to cut, cut off the tree, um, I mean, there, there was just, they didn't, he was not opposing cutting the tree at the time. He's like, well, it really wouldn't, I, I couldn't even use that area back there. We parked, they parked there before, previous, they just didn't have nothing to, to stop the hell and everything else beating up their cars. They do have a front garage, but it's an older house, it's an older house, the house, the vehicle they got would not fit in their house, in the garage. It's too high. They have, uh, I guess he has a lifted Jeep and a lifted, uh, Suburban. Um, he said, I, I wouldn't be, I wouldn't be able to save my wife's car. The Jeep, I guess he wasn't too worried about, but the family vehicle, he wanted to make sure it went all the way in and, and stopped getting beat up from all the hell that we're getting.
Were you the homeowner also?
No, sir, right here, Mr. Raymond and his wife. And I do, uh, believe that, uh, the, I think, what, what, I'm not too sure, but the, the neighbor, I know his wife had said, I guess it was an eyesore when we were up there. Even if we went back five foot, you're still gonna see the same thing you see as now. Um, I think that if we were able to keep it where we're at and we went up with a higher fence, went with the permit to get a higher fence, um, uh, Mr. Raymond said he would, at that time, I guess he could talk to him now, I don't know if it's still the same situation, but at that time, we were gonna, uh, purchase the higher fence, since it is both their properties. He would've took care of that at that time. Um, I'm, I'm guessing he's still opposed to, that he'd, he'd put up the higher fence so it wouldn't be... Um, they said something about the water, there was gonna be a gutter, we're not finished it here. There's gonna be a gutter and it connects all the water at the end as well.
On your next job, do you know to go get a permit?
Oh, yes, sir, I was there just, yes, sir.
That's the problem.
Yes, sir.
That, that's what's caused your heartburn, not getting a permit. Any, any questions?
Don't, I don't really have a question, I just wanted to maybe hear from the homeowner, if he wants to say something.
Appreciate y'all's time today, sorry we're, we're here.
State your name from the record.
My name's Brian Raymond, I'm the owner at 2514 West Avenue with my wife, Carol. Um, we're here asking for a variance. I wish we could all go back in time and do stuff the right way and I wish we did. It would be completely just too expensive for us to fix these issues majorly. We're happy to try to correct this the, the best we can. Um, like I said, we offered to build a fence and try to make it pretty, to make, you know, be a good neighbor. We completely intend on putting in a firewall, if, if y'all see that it's fit for us to do that. Property, other properties in the neighborhood do that, like they pointed out the neighbor to our other side. Um, their, if you look at their structure compared to ours, it goes back further towards that alley than ours does and it's within, and the person across from it, um, his structure, which attaches to his house, goes all the way to the fence and it's on the fence line in the alley. Um, and there's other structures to the other side that do the same thing and on the same block. So this was completely in the norm, um, that we thought. You know, it, it's consistent with the neighborhood and everything else. You know, hardships being that, you know, you wouldn't know unless we, you know, we had Mr. Fisher's ear on everything we did. Um, you know, but just looking, if you just drove down the alley and checked, you would notice that this is, it's done well, it's done right. Um, we get compliments from everybody else in the neighborhood. Um, you know, and I think, you know, the, the major thing is, like, we're not trying to complain about the other people with their setbacks. It's not what I'm trying to get y'all to attention to. I'm just trying to point out that it is, um, consistent and we are willing to do whatever we can. As far as a firewall is concerned, we will be happy to do that.
The opening there, is that a garage, gonna be a garage?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is there gonna be additional concrete work done to accommodate a vehicle turning up into there? Or is that's gonna be a pretty good jump? Is there more flatwork that's gonna be done?
We, we, we're happy to do it, your honor, I mean, your honor, sir. Yes, I, I believe, well, there, there can be, I'd like, we just kinda got, it's been sitting still for months now, just kinda wait, waiting to see what we can do. We, we're happy to, to make it as right as we can. Um, the neighbor behind, um, has said that he'd be, he'd be happy to sign any hang. He's, obviously, y'all, y'all seen his letter and support.
Is, is that framed out in there for fireplace?
Uh, yes, sir. Yes, sir, so every, that carport structure is, is finished, like, besides the firewall. Everything, electrical's in there, um, works in there, every, everything's finished in it, it's, it's fully built. Um, and then the other side is intended for, you know, play space, outdoor space for, for the family.
Is that a gas fireplace or a wood burner?
It's a ventless gas.
Ventless gas.
Uh, yes, sir. And there, there's a door right there that goes out, so we couldn't really move that wall in anymore without that wall being on that door. We try to make it as uniform as possible, like Cruz said. We went over multiple plans and this just makes sense coming off of the, the roof line as, as it was, um, as, as well as the other properties in the neighborhood had done.
Kinda is what it is right now, isn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. You know...
Any questions?
One of our main things to do, it was just that neighbor's roof line that was on, on our fence line. And it's, and it's a good... And it's, and it's a good, I don't know how, thirty feet or something, that runs it, and it stops right before you can look at that picture. And so they don't overhang it, they don't touch, you know. And so we were doing what we thought was consistent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more public comment?
Chairman, Board, I'm Bob Stribling, I'm the neighbor adjacent to the carport, and I don't want to be here either today, I appreciate y'all being here. We're out of COVID, we meet together at least. But just want to give some background to this, and kind of go over it. Our house, the appraisal district says our house was built in 1951, I think, or 52. That sounds about right, so our roof that goes kind of into that five feet has been there, I guess, seventy years. I don't think it's been touched, so so that's something I'm going to bring out.
The overhang part you're talking about?
Yes, sir. It's been there, I guess, seventy years. That's the way it was built. Across the alley, there was a letter in favor, I think that's Mr. Raymond's brother, he can clear that up, so.
Did you think that was an alley?
Sure. Yes, I sure do. People use it as an alley, it's, you know, I thought it was an alley, I'm an appraiser, so.
Yeah, you're professional.
I didn't look at it, so yeah, I considered it an alley. So, the lots are really big on that block. We're blessed with big lots. This lot is 136 by 150. There's no reason to crowd anything up, so it's almost a half acre. The layout of Brian's house is about like the layout on the lot like everybody else's. There's nothing unusual or any hardship. There's plenty of room to build, there's plenty of room to build a carport behind his house. He's got a two-car garage in front on the side, it's about twenty-three foot wide. So if you just take that back, it's twenty-three feet wide at the back. If you put a two-car carport and extend it, I think you can go out eighteen feet before you even get to the twenty-foot setback. So there's plenty of room to meet all the setback requirements and have a two-car carport. Here's what happened. Brian wanted to build, I guess, an outdoor living area with the fireplace and all of that, which is fine. But he built it, it occupies most of that twenty-three foot depth. He didn't bring it out into the east, into his backyard or anything, it goes straight back, so he used up all the carport area for the outdoor living area. So when he wants to build a carport, there's very little space left, and he has to crowd it over on the end. So I guess my point is, the situation we're facing, Brian created. It's his choices that created that. So, Brian several months ago told me in passing, I said, I'm going to build a carport, and I said, fine, that's great. I have no problem with Brian building a carport or outdoor living area. I had no idea he wasn't going to get a permit and build way into the setbacks. So that's kind of where we are. The carport looks out of place, it's out of character. It doesn't look good from Avenue J, looking down that, down that way. It's just not consistent. So, the last thing I'd say is that the fact that the improvements are in place, to me, has no bearing. I simply ask that the board enforce the setback requirements and deny the variance.
So your heartburns with the carport?
Yes, sir.
And that other structure there, you're okay with?
You know what, it goes eight, seven feet further, but I'm fine with that structure.
Okay.
Yeah, we were out of town for Easter, and came back, and we were, he'd already built that pitch part, and I knew it was too, that's fine. But then, damn, the carport was, is the issue. And again, he created all of the circumstances that required that.
Flat roof?
Yeah.
Yes.
Would it be more palatable to you, the carport, if there was a firewall, would it look any more appealing?
No, ma'am. It doesn't look good from Avenue J, it is out of character. Some of the other things in the neighborhood have been there forever, and some of them were probably not even permitted. It just, it doesn't look appropriate. I think, given, he's got a hundred and thirty-six foot wide lot. There's no reason to crowd into, surely we can have five foot setback on a hundred and thirty-six foot wide lot.
Board have any questions, Mr. Stribling?
Thank you.
Thank you. Here we go. Stock and Talking Board, anybody want to start? Drift your back up there, what are you going to tell us?
Just available for any more questions for staff, and...
Okay, well, it's, my notes say it's time for the board to start visiting.
With a five-foot setback, it would still be visible from my neighbors, and from the street as well, is that correct?
Yes, so this would be the required five-foot setback in here.
The main structure there is, is it a garage or an outdoor living area?
Okay, so the carport and, the owner and the contractor, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is thirty-three feet wide and twenty-six feet long. So out of the thirty-three feet, roughly thirteen feet is the width of the carport. So the remainder, so it's about twenty feet of the patio structure with the fireplace, and then about thirteen by twenty-six in here, this little dotted area is the carport. Yes, sir. Just go back one?
Yeah, sure. Okay, that's the, that's the underground, that's the, that's not, it's not a living area, it's just the outside patio. That's the main one right there.
So there's not going to be a wall?
No, ma'am.
Right here?
No, ma'am. It's all open. They have three OBO beams, which allows, would pass any code with the city to go up and have that wider structure. And that's so they could come out from the outside to come in. And I do understand, he said, if we could build, we could have built behind his house in the future, he was thinking about putting a swimming pool in the back area. That right there is where his little kitchen area is going to be, outside patio, and then it's for future reference, I guess, that you can...
So it's not a garage?
Excuse me?
The main structure's not a garage, so the all sides, the back, the back will be, that's to the alley, that will be closed in, or will be a garage door?
No, that's, all that stays open.
Oh, it's all going to stay open?
Yes, sir.
Look into the east, okay.
Will there be a fence? There was a fence all the way, let me see.
So look into the east, it's going to be open to, okay.
The only one that's going to...
The carport is what...
See, right here, there's a fence that comes from right there, that pillar, that block pillar all the way there, and there's still a fence that covers it. And then right there at that angle, there would be an iron fence, a wrought iron fence, so it wouldn't be possible to go inside the house, or inside, it'd be locked there.
So Cruz, would the fence come in front of the concrete driveway? Would there be a gate access, or would it just stop before the driveway?
It'd stop, as of this, as of right now, I have not, it's up to the...
Okay.
And I do understand, he said that he could have parked anywhere before here. He's always parked in that area there, there used to be a fence prior to there. There was another pillar there, and there was a fence, so that's, he always parked his vehicle there, and he just had nothing to cover it. So he only, always had that little area just to swing back there, and he parked his vehicle back there. And like Mr. Pedrito said, that even if I went five feet back, it's still the same structure that he's going to see. He's still going to see the same thing if I went, if I moved it this far back, and put my beam five foot in, you're still going to see the same thing. So there's nothing, I understand when he said, well, there's an ice ore, and I, the only thing we could think of is, I could build your fence all the way up, get a permit for an eight-foot fence, which would go up the cross, and when he looks, he's looking at his fence.
Let's leave, let's put the carport in the parking lot for right now. I want to talk about this outdoor area. What do we need, what needs to happen to make that into compliance?
You would have to, okay, so to bring it into compliance with zoning, he would have to remove seven feet. So it's thirteen and a half feet right now, well, I guess it'd be six, six and a half feet technically.
Okay.
So you have to cut six and a half feet from the, where you see it at the rear there, and move it back.
From the building rear or the concrete?
From the overhang.
Oh, I see, okay.
So I guess it'd be, is it two feet overhang?
Yes, sir.
So it'd be two feet of overhang, and then another four and a half feet back as well. The structure itself would have to take off four and a half feet.
You said seven and a half feet, yeah?
Yes, sir.
Six and a half.
I'm sorry. Six and a half. How deep is it right now? What's the dimensions of it right now?
I measured, we measured, what, thirty-three by twenty-six? So thirty-three feet deep.
Thirty-three feet deep? Taking off the back six and a half would make it into compliance.
Two of that would be the overhang.
That's two of the overhang, yes, sir.
Four and a half inch of structure.
Yes.
Could that get into the fireplace?
Yes, ma'am.
Be right at the fireplace, it looks like. It'd be right on top of it.
Yes, Mr. Fisher and I went over there and measured, it'd be right there at the, right there if that wall goes to the fireplace, that's where that beam would have to be. And then I'd be able to pull out two feet from my overhang. And the only reason I went two feet overhang was to make it uniform with the rest of the house.
Yes.
Everything else had two feet on the back, and then on the sides. Like he said, they were older, they had like four feet overhang on, on all the houses around there. It's just an older Santa Rita area, that's the way they built them back then, I guess, and so to keep it uniform, that's how they all did it, and I just kept it with whatever was at the house now.
So you'd have to flush the overhang?
Yes, sir. There would be no overhang.
That'd leave you twenty-seven feet of depth. What was the width?
Twenty-six feet.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six and then thirteen for the carport? Well, there's not a lot of timbers there, you sure could move it back pretty easy, from that standpoint. You know, sheep rock, you know, no wires run, no ductwork.
Okay, hang on, so, let's just clarify, we've got the numbers right. So it's thirty-three feet wide and twenty-six feet long. So actually, that, he would have to take off six and a half feet of the twenty-six, is that right? Let's just make sure we got that right, so it'll be...
That's the even four foot into the house.
Yeah.
Into the structure, not the house, into the structure, yeah.
Correct. So it'd only be, what, nine, twenty and a half feet? If you cut off that, or nineteen and a half?
Nineteen and a half.
Yeah, okay.
So it'd be nineteen and a half by twenty-six.
Well, actually, no, because the twenty-four is my structure. I still have two feet overhang. So I have twenty-four there, if he wants me to take off, six feet, if he wanted me to take off six feet, inside is... Yeah, eighteen, well, that's to my overhang, and then two more feet.
And Board Chair and members, again, Aaron Benoni, Assistant Director of Planning and Development Services. As some of you are contractors, or past contractors even, you know that anything over a twenty-four foot span is going to need to be engineered, and that foundation's going to be, need to be engineered as well. So no matter what happens, whether there's alterations or not, there's probably going to be some alterations made to be looking at what's happening with the structure, since it has not been inspected or permitted as of yet. So just keep that in mind.
Well, that would happen anyway, right?
Yes, sir.
So...
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Just want to keep y'all on the date.
You're doing a good job. Thank you. Thank you, Charlie.
Only because I'm fairly new at this.
Sure.
I have some questions.
Okay.
Conformity was one of my questions. And what kind of precedent would it set if we did, and I don't know that we can, or get... If we didn't do anything with the building, the building, not the carport?
Technically, unlike other, Brendan can correct me if I'm wrong, like courts and those sorts of tribunals.
Okay.
Each of these cases is done on a case-by-case basis, so technically, that's not, even if you all approved it against staff's position, that doesn't now mean that the next case, the next person, the next door neighbor builds the same thing, and that staff's going to change their mind. But what it does do is it, you know, it could create that, that situation where, you know, coming before the board, now the board's approved one at thirteen and a half feet.
We'd have to.
So that, yeah.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
I certainly understand the need for covered parking, and there's a structure on, West Blue Garden that's an exceptional area, and it's got the, by far, the happiest carport I've ever seen, that it complies. So aesthetics here, compliance here, we're stuck with that one on West Blue Garden, it's like the most awful thing I've ever seen. And it's in the front yard.
I'm going to have to go look at that one.
You just passed it, Gary, you just opened it.
It's a car, a six-car carport, single line, but they still park in the yard, so. Sorry.
And I don't need to remind you that carports are never ending questions, have them month after month after month. When we talk about that one-hour firewall, that in and of itself is a really difficult question. I don't know that we approved a firewall yet on a carport that has come here. We're still working with this, we're on this, it's not an easy thing to accomplish.
We're recording, so we can have a...
You just know that carports are a big issue in this town, yes. So short of, if we're still talking about the open patio living area, whatever you want to call it, you would still have to have that six and a half feet?
Yes, that, that, what you're referring to, Ms. Poole, if that was a, an actual alley, and not on, overreaching onto the property, if the carport was what we call unencumbered, so it's basically under seven and a half feet, there's no walls or pertinences, it's completely open, you could measure the setback to halfway to the alley. Unfortunately, because this is not a legal alley, and because there's a wall, a partition wall in between the structures, that provision would go away, and they'd need twenty feet. But if this, if that was a real alley, and there was nothing underneath the structure, just a roof with four posts, they could go to, you would, you could measure it to the midpoint, but that's not applicable here.
Who maintains the alley?
My understanding is the private property owner's requirement, and they, someone put a driveway in a long time ago, and they all just kind of share it.
But there is a utilities runner back there?
Yes.
Does the city use it?
Yes.
Bob's got a, he's got a driveway in the back.
There's several that do, in that one, as I said earlier, in that one block. The two on the end, that would be like twenty-five oh one, Live Oak and maybe twenty-five oh one Avenue J, they both have a back alley driveway. Uh, the one on Avenue J, though, has a gated, a gate, and it's closed.
They're trying to say that, so that, so that, part of that alleyway belongs to half the.
Half of it belongs to one side of the street, Avenue J.
Yeah.
And the other half of that quote alley belongs to Live Oak, is the way I understand it. Even though it is an alley, uh, full of weeds.
Right.
I drove it, you can drive it, if I can drive my car, then, you know.
Yeah.
Um, I drove down it, uh.
Trash trucks used to drive it too.
Yeah. Well, I don't know that they do anymore. I didn't see any trash.
They pick up at the front now, but in the day, they did.
In the day, they probably did.
Yes, sir.
I, I must say, I do have, here there, we bought the home, uh, twenty years ago, we do have access onto the concrete part off the alley.
Yeah.
We bought the home twenty years ago, we, we certainly have an access off the alley, and, but we have open parking, there's no, our structures are way back, and clearly not in violation. We have parking, and it's open parking, and that's an option here. Nobody's stopping the parking in this area we're talking about. It's, we don't cover ours, and they, we could have open parking.
So you could leave your vehicle parked out there, and nobody's not gonna come tow you away?
No, it's on my property.
But it's on, it's on, it's on your property, but it's.
It's in the back from now.
Huh? It's, it's, I mean, if it's an alley.
There was trash pickup, and they, like, guess the rest of the city changed.
Changed.
There was, there was trash pickup in the alley.
Brendan, I'm going back in my weak legal mind about something that's being used, you know, it's not approved, uh, replatted, that it's been used for so long, is a certain thing that.
Right.
And what's that called?
So there is a legal theory of like a prescriptive easement or implied dedication.
That's what it is. That's the word I was looking for.
The only way.
Implied.
Yeah, the only way to know that for sure, I mean, there would have to be a judicial determination that that exists. I mean, we can't sit here today and say, oh, yeah, well, we've used it this long, and so we're just gonna say it's an alley. I mean, it would have to be litigated by someone to make that determination. Now, is it likely that a court may find that it was? Maybe so. If it's been used this long, it's open to the public. I don't know if the city, I don't think we maintain it, and it is a part of these other lots. So, I mean, I think we would have to kinda clear up the real estate side of it to, you know, have it surveyed or whatever, so there's a good legal description for it, but.
Right there going in from Johnson, between thirteen and fourteen, there is a city sign in there, says "Slow" as you drive in. So the city does go in there, and they've put the sign in there. So I'm, I know the city works, I mean, I guess they maintain it, 'cause there's, there's no potholes, no nothing in there. Um, thirteen has the back driveway, um, fourteen has the driveway right there, fifteen has the back driveway, and at the very end of the alley, they have a, a, it's not.
One next to the end.
At the very end over here, um, that one has a back driveway, and they all go through the alley.
How many years ago did the, did, would the city change from trash pickup from the alley to the, to, to street cur? Six, six or seven years ago was only, right?
Yeah, I'm not too too near long ago, because there was a big fight about it.
Yeah. Mr. Truman, you're okay with the outdoor area with the roof, gable roof and everything? You're, you're okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We, we figured it was probably too far, but we were cool with that.
Okay, okay.
It's the carport, and again, if you park in there, it may not be covered, but here's nothing to do with parking.
What I'm thinking, correct me if I'm wrong, we vote on, it's two separate, it, vote, uh, make a motion for two separate, two separate motions. One for the family, whatever we're calling.
Family, family out, outbuilding or?
Yeah, and then we'll go, then we'll go work on the carport issue. How's that? Does that work? Will that work, Jeff?
Sounds good.
If y'all do decide to approve, um, we had some conditions of approval that we had set up. And so I wanted to just take a moment to go over those with you, and now that it's kinda changed a little bit, just to see which ones would be applicable.
Okay.
We just have a minute, and y'all can take a look as well.
Okay.
So I guess the, well, maybe the first question is, would the, would that wall, the partition wall remain, or would that come out?
No, that partition wall's holding the, the structure of the, that, that's holding your, that's the, holding the main building there, so that, that has to stay there.
And how wide is this, how, how wide is this span again?
Twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet exactly?
Twenty-three, twenty-three feet. From this wall to that is twenty-three feet. Now, the overhang is two feet.
If it, if it, if it's twenty-four feet or greater, is there other conditions to structural things that come into play? Charlie? If it's, if it's twenty-four foot or greater, does it require?
Engineering.
Engineering, or is this actually less than twenty-four?
Yes, like Aaron was indicating, they'd have to have an engineer seal, and then any kind of footing or foundation, foundation to support that clear span would have to be designed by an engineer as well.
Sound like.
And we can go through that process, um, and we let you know that when you get your, when you apply for a building permit.
Okay, um, on the original.
That will happen in spite of what we do today. In spite of everything, yeah, I got you. Okay, okay.
That's the Engineering Practice Act.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you, Charlie.
On the original blueprints that he had from his house, when, I guess they did the house, um, and like I said, that's already been, that was already on the original blueprint. I gave it to the city as well, um, and that struck, now, all that foundation was already poured at that time, so I have no idea what's under there. If we had to go and put footings out, I wouldn't, wouldn't be, we could go ahead and do that as well.
Yeah, okay.
Go ahead, Jeff, finish it, just so you can see it.
Thank you. Help educate me a little bit.
Okay, so let's just see, I think most of these are still applicable, but just to make sure. So number one, the applicant shall obtain a building permit from permits and inspections for the carport and patio structure. So now it would just be the patio structure, uh, and all other required permits. So if there's any other permits that are applicable as well. The variance shall be limited to the footprint provided on the concept plan. I think we can say, uh, provided to the footprint of the, um, you know, patio structure on the concept plan. The structure shall remain open and unencumbered on all sides, except for the middle wall already constructed. So what, basically, what we, we don't wanna do is, if we're gonna approve a lesser variance, we don't wanna have them come in and now enclose the whole structure with more walls, 'cause then that's gonna be more visible. So just keep what he has open on those other three sides. Uh, and then the applicant shall place a note on a revised plan that the lots encompassing the property are not sold separately unless they are replatted into one, since the home straddles multiple lot lines. We've been doing this, um, more so recently, uh, you know, and again, not any, any of the current homeowners, but just in past cases where they'll sell off a half of a legal lot. So this, since the house straddles multiple lot lines, they could just put a note on their plan. So I think, I think we keep these conditions, but we just changed one and two to say the applicant shall obtain, uh, a building permit for the, for the patio structure, not the carport, if y'all wanna approve this.
I think we ought to do it all separately.
The only other thing that would, would have been covered was that little area on top, was the glass window that was, was that?
Triangle?
Would that be set? Yes, ma'am. There was gonna be a glass window there, but nothing else, everything else just the same. Would that apply what they are?
Yeah, I think, I think the conditions is good. I think unencumbered, in terms of the zoning ordinance, means underneath that beam.
No, nothing would be there.
So that, yeah, so even if that part wasn't there, it would be okay. It's everything underneath.
Yes, sir.
Except for the wall.
Basically, under the beam.
Yes, sir.
Rod, I need a motion.
I'll make, I'll make one.
All right.
In, in talking about the patio structure specifically, uh, I'd, I'd make a motion to approve, subject to the conditions that were shown, all four conditions. I'll make that motion.
All right. Does that sound good, the stat? Is that motion?
Yes.
You can take out the, the pad, or the carport portion, and just make them to the patio.
Correct. Yes, sir.
I'll move that.
Got a motion? Do I hear a second?
I will second that motion.
All right, we'll have a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Any opposed? Okay, gotta pass that.
Thank you.
All right, let's move to the carport.
That one's gonna be tougher.
I guess I gotta say motion carries in six zero. Carport. Jeff, so the options are firewall or move it back five feet? I mean, move it back five feet, it doesn't require a firewall.
That's right.
Okay, they're approached right now. On zero lot line. Well, to get out of hot water, you're gonna have to move it back five feet. To be in compliance, right? Is that, that, it'd be out of our hands then.
Yes, you'd, you'd still have to approve the rear variance, though, 'cause the rear variance.
Or the firewall.
So you, you'd have several options. You could approve both variances, but if you approve both variances at zero feet, they're gonna need the firewall. Or you could approve the rear setback at thirteen and a half, but make him move it back five feet from the side, and then they wouldn't need a firewall. Or you could deny both. Or approve both.
Yeah, it's just concrete.
Cruz, and maybe you've answered this already, but I mean, is it structurally possible without removing the whole structure to knock off five feet even?
It's, it's, it's like Ms. Debbie said, if I moved it five feet, I'd only have eight feet. I wouldn't be able to, I wouldn't be able to fit nothing in there. I'd have to have a garage door, which is, garage door's eight foot, unless I do a custom door, um.
Okay, yeah.
A garage door usually is eight foot, so I need eight, a foot here and a foot there, so I'm still off.
So you're gonna turn that into a garage?
No, ma'am. I'm just saying, I'd need that, that much to get in there, to get comfortable. She has a suburban, a full.
The width of a vehicle.
Yes. She has, if, if I'm closing it in that much, and I have to put the beams, structures to this side, um, if she, I don't, I, it'd be hard for her to park in there with the suburban, unload the, the kids, uh, car seats, everything, grocery, whatever, things, you gotta go back there.
He, he's right, 'cause a, a parking space in San Angelo is nine feet wide, and so I think, yeah, and I think it's only thirteen feet wide now. Losing five would get you down to eight.
Yes, sir. Uh, and like I said, if, even if I went down, I, I understand the neighbor's concern, it, he said, well, it looks ugly. If I took off five feet, you're still gonna see the same thing.
And then it'd be ugly and weird.
It's, yes, ma'am. It would be weird, it's not, nothing for me to.
It's really weird looking.
Yeah. Um, and if we put a firewall and, and it, it went up with the fence, uh, I mean, that was, I, I knew I was gonna probably have to go with the firewall. Uh, that's where we're here to get approved to, if y'all said yes, then where those boards are, those four-by-four posts are, they'll be setting up a firewall. That way, if anything ever caught fire, nothing goes through.
Can I ask Bob a question?
What about the existing structure above the post? Would that also be considered, need to be firewall, if that was even to be considered? Would that have to be restructured in order to, 'cause you're gonna have to put a firewall through that too as well, right?
No, sir, just wherever I'm, I'm away from the, the, uh, to the neighbor's property. That's the only case I'd need firewall.
What, it, it, correct me if I'm wrong, on a firewall, to firewall something, you have to go all the way to the, to the frame structure?
It'd be the.
Being pointed or flat?
Yes, sir, it'd be from right here for that LVO beam that's going across with the four-by-four post, that's from the floor all the way to the top of there.
And then top, and what about that area?
No, sir, 'cause that's farther than, I wouldn't.
Oh, that, 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 that's part of the, that's part of the.
Yes, sir, that's part of the house already.
There, okay.
A question for Bob, if I can just get that in real quick. How would you feel about the aesthetics if it goes up to eight-foot fence? Would that improve anything? He's gonna park there anyway. You're gonna be looking at a vehicle. I'm just curious.
You know, we have a five-foot setback, he's got a hundred and thirty-six feet to deal with. You know, it, it would look not as bad if it's back five feet, but it, and he could still park there, it's open, you'd have open parking, I guess, partial open parking. But again, this whole situation was created by his construct, the way he designed it without a permit.
Right.
Crowded the patio into where he doesn't have enough room for the carport. Just please remember that. There's no reason to be in this situation. These are huge lots.
Right, we're just trying to find a peaceful way to.
Well, I, I think with that patio, I tried to be agreeable there. I thought I, you know.
Yeah, compromise.
Honestly, I think a five-foot setback, either we have it or we don't in town, I mean.
Charlie Kemp, I, I wanted to kinda address your question, and you're correct, that, that fire wall has to go to the deck, so they'll have to remove that, take it to the deck, and then you have to come in, um, at like twenty-four inches underneath, and, and create some, some protection. 'Cause you're trying to keep from the fire, like, if you just fill the wall there, and the fire happens underneath the carport, it still will jump.
Yeah, it still, that's what I was thinking.
And it has to go to the deck.
Yeah.
So if you're losing two feet already, you're not gonna be able to adequately park into there.
Put it down to about six feet.
Yeah, at two feet, I would still be on this side of the, there's a board, uh, give you a point, but it's, it's, it's right on this side of the, on this side of the tree. I think I'd still be able to park there. Uh, we checked it, and it's two fo, two foot from the property line. That's at the outside of my, that's at the outside of the, the top of the carport, not from the beam, that's from the outside. So I have another eight inches on the outside coming all the way in, that eight, nineteen, eleven, I would, I have another foot from that beam all the way out. So I'm just actually moving in one foot from that beam, 'cause they're saying it has to be two foot from the outside to the inside. So I'd still be able to put a firewall there and, and be able to park there. The only thing is, it'd be, I mean.
Anybody wanna make a motion?
So we have a rear setback as well with the carport, is that correct?
That's right.
We ought, we have the set, the rear setback and then the zero.
That's right.
That we have to work with. Do you wanna break it up?
Do we wanna break it up into two motions? One for the rear, thirteen feet, in lieu of the twenty, and then deal with the.
I think we have to deal with the carport separately completely. It's, I'm just, it's the intention.
It may, it's up to y'all, but I think it may be more convoluted that way, 'cause you've already separated the, the patio. So you could just say in one motion to, again, depending on what you wanna do, to approve one and not the other, approve both or deny both, and just make that one, so be, basically be its own, all one motion.
Do you want your motion?
Well, two wrongs don't make a right, so as bad as I hate to say it, I'm making a motion that we deny the variance, um, for the zero feet in lieu of the required five.
Okay.
And I don't see a problem with thirteen feet. in, uh, required, instead of the required minimum, minimum twenty on the back side, so.
Okay, and also on the back side, just like you were saying, if I did go in, then it'd just make it look chopped up, uh, and like a remodel instead of unified all the way, so.
Right.
I understand what you're saying.
But at this point. So that's my motion.
Have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second that motion.
Just to clarify, so it, it's a motion to approve the rear yard variance, but deny the side yard?
Yes.
Variance, okay.
Yes.
Regarding the five foot from, regarding the zero setback.
Correct.
Right, on the carport.
On the carport, yeah, yeah, we're talking only about the, the side.
And I have a question, to allow the thirteen and a half feet on the back, rather than the twenty, then will there need to be any cutting of the building that's already there, or? We talked about that a while ago, about six and a half feet was the difference. And we talked about that, and then we made the motion a while ago about, uh, that building, the patio building. Um, so if we do this thirteen and a half, then they, then the owner would not have to do anything to, excuse me, the footage to the building, am I correct? In understanding what this means.
Okay, so that, that second picture to the right is, is good, so he would have to cut five feet, so where that, basically where it's right close to the fence, he'd have to cut five feet back all the way down, but then he could still keep the rest of the structure, which is, and I just wanna clarify, just again, because we don't do decimals, you're right, it's thirteen and a half, but we'll just, when you vote in, it'll be thirteen feet.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
But my question is about the, not about the carport, my question is about the building, uh, that has the fireplace in it and all of that. We spoke a while ago about six feet or six and a half, whatever you wanna call it, um, to have to cut it off almost to the fireplace. If we approve and allow that thirteen as a variance, thirteen feet as a variance, then he would not have to make any changes to the.
Yeah, to, to.
Correct.
Okay, that's what I, I needed to understand, okay.
And what we're allowing then is that, is that carport, it too would not be held of being brought in on, you know, inward, but the, the zero lot line following it parallel to the fence line.
Mm-hmm, the width would.
Was, was, now, the motion is it's gonna need to come in five feet.
Right. And the thing is.
Or, or if you get a survey, and if you find that you own half that fence on the other side, then you got another issue you gotta deal with, with the owner.
You're probably gonna lose the aspect of, of parking.
Yeah.
To be feasible, but you're not gonna lose the expense of what you've invested up totally, because that could become a storage, because he still has a place in the backyard to build covered parking, if covered parking's the goal. So that way he's not gonna lose everything that's invested in that structure so far.
And it, it, y'all does? Have, has the owner done a survey on the property?
I believe I gave them a survey of the, I gave the city, uh, Ms. Jeff, I gave the city.
Found the pins and everything.
I can, or if you wanna, Cruz, you can go back, but it's, it's that slide, slide that says concept plan.
They've already have a survey of the.
So, so the survey's been done.
That's right.
Yes, sir.
And everything is consistent with what we're seeing on this, on this picture drawing.
On these pictures, yes, sir.
Yeah, okay, alright, very good. Yep, alright, so we have.
And I guess we would include those same conditions for both?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, i- is that a part of your, your motion to include the, the staff conditions?
Yes.
And is that the second as well?
That is correct. If the vote doesn't pass, what happens then?
One thing at a time.
So.
Discuss some more.
Yeah, so to approve a variance, you have to have a concurring vote of six. If you don't get a concurring vote on a denial, I mean, and, you know, we never get an approval, then it's just denied, um, because it didn't get approved. It, well, the ordinance just requires six, so.
And there are six of us here.
It requires six to approve, is that what you said?
Yeah, to approve a variance, um, to the ordinance, you have to have six.
Exactly, it's supposed to be, there's total of nine of us.
Right, that's right.
And my motion was to deny. My motion was to deny.
Yeah, two, zero, yeah.
Yeah, yes.
Motion was to deny the, the, you know, the zero lot line.
Okay.
But everything else consistent.
Yes.
To the, to the patio structure.
So as long as I bring that five feet in from my property line, and I get a permit with it, everything's okay?
Yeah, consistent with whatever, I mean, that, that's what's on, well, we haven't voted for it yet, but that's what we got.
That's what's on the floor.
You know, consistent with whatever else they require you to do. So we got a motion, second. Okay, motion's on the table, let's have a vote, all in favor say aye.
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 So who is the second?
Don.
Don.
Did you vote aye?
Yeah.
Aye. 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 That's it.
What'd you say?
I said aye.
Okay.
So six, alright, then.
Aye.
So six, zero?
Six, zero, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, here we go. Alright, we're done.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Wow. This could be hard.
Wait, wait till I thought this was gonna be easy.
Almost this.
I don't know.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, did you tell me that, did you tell me that, Gary? Ask me no questions. Hey, Mr. Chairman, I think, I think before we leave, that we need to, as a board, say thank you to Sheri, this is her last meeting.
Oh, it is?
She didn't tell anybody.
Where were you going?
Tell anybody.
Some of us knew.
Traveling?
Are you recording?
Yeah.
Do, do, do you have an extra car seat?
If, if you could play cards, my husband would love it.
Oh, okay. Well, congratulations. Vegas?
No, we, we've got a six thousand mile trip.
Wow.
Wow.
Is that around the world?
No, just around the, the US, all the places that we missed when we went by the first twelve times.
That's going, that's going back and forth from Texas one side to the other.
Did you need to say something?
Well, I don't know, have you closed the meeting out?
No.
The division report, well, part of it is, uh, Ms. Sheri Bailey is retiring at the end of this month, and we've been very fortunate to have her for two plus years, it seems like, five, twelve years, something like that? Yes, uh, but we've been very fortunate to have her expertise and her knowledge of zoning ordinances and things like that, so she's gonna be very difficult to replace. Uh, we have hired a new planning manager that is scheduled to start June the sixteenth, so next Wednesday, or a week from Wednesday, I should say. Um, Zach Rainbow from, uh, Abilene, Texas is gonna be coming down, and, um, starting with us, he had, myself and John, actually, when we worked in Abilene, worked with Zach, and he wanted to come down to San Angelo and have tomatoes thrown at him, so come on down. So we're excited for Zach, he actually has about fourteen years of experience there in Abilene, all in planning, all the way from an entry level planner, all the way up to an assistant director of planning and development services, so he, he grasps the planning and development's lifecycle pretty well.
And his title will be again, planning?
Planning manager, yes, ma'am. Um, right now, we're just.
Zach, who's sitting in, one more time?
Rainbow.
Zach Rainbow?
Yes. So we're excited about him coming on, uh, we will have a development task force in July. We'll make sure that this board is aware of that, and what that is, is that's when our planning and building permits and engineers sit down with the development community and discuss different things. It is always good to have one or two board members there, you know, you might say, hey, I'd like to go to that and let, let others know, hey, I'm gonna go to that, you don't go to that, so you don't have a quorum there. But it is always good to go and hear what developers are saying, what the, the city is saying, hey, here's what ideas that we wanna work with you on, and come up with the different ordinances and changes that help guide our city. So, uh, I know Mr. Cortez has been there a couple of times and, and heard some things and has some great input, so there are some other opportunities for you as well. Um, so we just continue to keep working, we've got a great development community right now, the, the world is, is interested in development, uh, as some of y'all know, we want houses, we're running out of lots, we're trying to develop more lots, and infrastructure costs a lot of money in this part of the world, and so it's very difficult to put new lots on the ground.
Yep.
So we're trying to figure out some more infill items of how do we do some more infill things that might help with waterline, sewer line, and roads on lots that are platted, but they don't have any of those things yet. Uh, so there's some of those out there, and those are still getting even more expensive as, every time we talk, so.
Y'all definitely need a lot more money for the infill for sewer and water.
We do, the hard part is coming up with a funding source.
Yeah.
You know, it's just like everything else, you have to look at your budget and say, well, what are we gonna skip out on this, this month?
Right.
To put towards that.
Yeah.
So it's, it's a challenging thing, but as always, if you ever have input, feel free to give John or I a call or talk with your, your city council member that may have appointed you here, and, um, any information is helpful, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
Next meeting agenda, uh, ax regular meeting, you know, the zoning board of adjustments is scheduled to begin at one thirty PM on Monday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-one, and City Hall is Mesmering Meeting Room. Do we have anything on, coming up on that?
We don't want to finish right now.
Okay, okay, okay. Need a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second? Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, fellas and ladies.